Okay, we will call the meeting to order at seven oh three P M. From a trustee perspective, we have John Harrison and George Benak here with me in person. And Pam Moskowitz is joining by video conference due to extraordinary circumstances. And Brian Cook is absent for this meeting, but I'm sure he'll watch the video. Most importantly, we have Carolyn Resnick, our interim library director here with us in person in official capacity, having initiated her. Role with us yesterday.
Right, yes.
We'll, we'll, we'll ask you, we wanted to schedule wise. It sort of moved Tao ahead in the schedule to, to speak to the website, but we were hoping you could make some. It's been twenty-four hours.
Thanks remarks. Absolutely. All problems.
Okay. Shall we say the pledge of allegiance?
Sure.
Thank you.
You know, it didn't use to say under God.
Right, right. Okay, and do we have any proposed changes to the agenda? We've got a pretty simple agenda for the evening, okay? And no call for executive session, right? Pam, you're agreed on that? Okay. Do you see any public comments, anyone raising? It was not, okay. And we don't have any members of the public other than our staff in the room, so we'll move forward. So perhaps George, do you want to make an introduction of Tao McGwen, who's done a bang up job moving this forward? I've never seen a major project with a date. I forget how many months out, five, six, four, that held, so.
Okay, so Tao has really. What precedes my membership as trustee, but Tao has really spearheaded the libraries move to a new website. And we've met a couple of times, just kind of brought me up to date, showed me some of the features. And after speaking with Tao, we thought that it would be a good idea for her to just run us through if he will be the major. Components of the new website, things that have changed and some things that existed before might be maybe in a different location or access differently. And Tao graciously agreed to stay late and empty this for us, so. Without further ado, what would be the best way to do this? Is Tao able to broadcast what she's showing?
To make that possible. Thank you. And Tao, you were part of the selection committee, the, the staff committee that worked to evaluate alternatives. And recommended the ultimate selection of Library Market, right?
Um, yeah, the work started before I started as well, um, with staff surveys and evaluations of other library websites. And then when I came on, we started looking comprehensively what to do with our branding first before doing a library website.
Okay.
So we did the branding, that was completed, and then it was put on pause, hopefully you picked up on it. We were very happy that was like it, because everyone's been making progress successfully.
Yeah, that's great.
Tao, can you just help me with the pronunciation of your last name?
Sure, it's Wang.
Say again.
Wang.
Wang. Thank you. We're waiting with this, we, we'll go out of order, just let me give the communication report.
Sure, I'm just gonna.
That'd be okay.
That's okay. I just.
Okay, while we're waiting for this, I just wanted to just give a quick update on a few things with the communications community.
Thank you.
I met with Tao Wang on Monday at two thirty to consult on the opening letter introducing the library's new website. Uh, it was essentially written by the former director, uh, but Tao and I went over it a little bit and made some tweets to it. And it was, uh, posted on the website. The new homepage that you used yesterday. And also yesterday, we welcomed Carolyn Resnick as interim director. Uh, the trustees provided coffee and assortment pastries, fruit and bagels, celebrating Carolyn's arrival. And the thanks back for their devotion and diligence in keeping the library running seamlessly in the absence of a director for the past month. A notice was sent to the staff about Carolyn's arrival. And it was posted on the homepage and Martin Wilbur at the examiner was sent a copy of the press release.
Wonderful.
You're welcome.
Yeah, thanks for hearing, but. I'm just joining the.
No problem.
It's on you. And so I can send it to do screen share. Show you with your hosted table pressure of that screenshot. I think, cause. So I, I was doing monthly reports and now this is the last month, but. Um, so this one's a little bit more brief, but it is going to just highlight some of the things I'll talk about.
Is there another?
Yeah.
And for, Carolyn may be familiar with Library Market. But I, and I don't know how familiar John and Georgia, um, but I think.
Not.
No, I didn't know, I don't know the company, no. So as Tao mentioned, we reviewed multiple websites that utilized multiple library websites that utilize Library Market. And I think they work with over two thousand libraries.
I'm not sure what the status, but I'm very familiar with the ones in Westchester right now, because we have been referencing some of their pages as well. So in Westchester, it's Scarsdale.
They have a nice website.
Yeah, Yonkers just launched too, while we were in the middle of our five month, um, project and. Proton Library as well are the ones that I'm familiar with, so. I think some people use their calendar product alone and some people use them, and we, um, we have done that. And it was all included, and there are some other additional features that we have not yet utilized, um, but that was also part of our package, like. Which in for your reservation.
I think one of the things too, we liked in the setup for Scarsdale was, I think they had something like the reserve around picture, right?
Yeah. Yeah, so we have, um. Um, I just want to say that I was asked by our former director to be the project lead on this. And we invited several staff members to join in this project as well, and throughout the. Throughout the five month process, we also consulted with different department heads when it was necessary for all, for everyone's input. So the other staff members were Amy Berger, who was in the adult services department. Julianne Pulasco, who's in children's services, Chantel, who's our staff assistant, um, and pretty much like office manager and everything. Um, so, so that was our core team, and we met on a weekly basis leading up to about mid-September. When we kind of turned over all of our content to Library Market for them to develop the website. They produced a website or like a structure for us to then go in and modify. And we spent all of October pretty much doing that, adding the photos, adding the content, it was really a lot of labor on our part towards the end. So, and it did help, but we got, um, you know, a lot of guidance from our branding guide with logos and colors. And we also were able to get new photographs of the library, like for the study rooms. So that made it a lot more modern and updated.
Yeah, that's lovely. Really looks nice.
So some of the, um, main features and functionality that we have on the patron facing side. Is that patrons can now search our website. They weren't able to do that before, so if you actually go to the website and search for notary, you'll be able to do that. And I don't know how much you guys want me to actually demo any of this, or just to give you more of an overview.
An overview is fine. If, you know, to show us certain parts of the website that you're most excited about.
Sure. So that, that was a big thing. Nothing is hidden here, which is really good. So if you scroll over everything, you're going to see. Um, pretty much the navigation and all the different pages and content. The widgets here are just some of the most popular things that patrons click on very often. So our reserve room, our events calendar, and our museum passes and ebooks. This was pretty much, um, gathered from Google Analytics and survey data from patrons, um, from the community survey. For our strategic plan, when we asked people what they actually use the website for. So a lot of it was checking out, um, what was in our catalog, which is right here, and it's, it's a sticky catalog, so it's like frozen. So no matter where you scroll down in the website, it stays at the top, so you can always go back to the menu there. So upcoming events, you'll see today's events. Um, I really love that the hours are right at the top here. Um, that's just, you know, basic information that should be right in the front when you go to any website. So we had on our front page also library news, which was, you know, pretty much anything about a library closing, but also new services. What else do we have to sort of?
So if we had a major snowstorm, that would.
It would be on actually announcements, this one for an update is, can go away when we don't have anything, but a closing would be right at the top over there.
Okay.
This, this is kind of more like if you had a board update or a message that you wanted to just get sent out or a press release or something. Um, we would want to make it a post right here. We also, um, might develop a more of an editorial, um. Section of the website where our librarians can write about censorship or upcoming monthly displays, stuff like that. So giving it a little bit more personality. We also want to remind everyone that we have lots and lots of books and book covers are very colorful and engaging. And, um, we have three different. Book rivers, they're called on our website, right at the, at the bottom. So you can scroll here for new fiction, or this month for celebrating Native American heritage and new nonfiction. We also want everybody to promote subscribing to our newsletter, so that's always here as well. And then we have some quick links here, um, that patrons can just, or staff even, can go all the way to the bottom and always get to without going through the menus.
Tao, can you show us just for a second what happens if you click on one of those titles? What does it take you to?
Takes you to the catalog.
And that interface is not what we see if you were on the Westchester County system, right? Or is it?
Um, so yeah, the Westchester County, uh, Westchester Library System just updated its catalog. So this was independent of our website, but it just happened that it was like, you know, two months before our launch. Um, so they do have a, their own interface, which has their logo.
Okay.
They also with Aspen, um, have, each library has its own instance, they call it, which is customizable by each library. So some libraries have actually use, are trying to use this as their own website, which, I mean, we just have our own website already, but I don't think it has any functionality. But, um, you can create like pages on here. What all we have done is simply just linked some of our most common things. And if you click on these, you actually go back to our website. So it's really nice.
I see, but in terms of going back to a title search, that seafood simple cookbook, that's sitting here inside the Chappaqua Library.
Not necessary.
Not a server, okay.
Yeah, you kind of have to.
So I still would have to go.
Checked out, you have to say, where is it? Yeah.
On that, and then I get to the menu, I see, right, okay, got it.
Yeah.
Okay.
So yeah, with their update, they also incorporated ebooks and physical books, all in one catalog, which I think everybody has been wanting for a while.
And Tao, correct me if I'm wrong, when we discussed the comments specific to the website, uh, those inquiries would be going directly to you?
Um, no, right now they're going to the, in, uh, the reference, so the information desk. And we got one already yesterday, which I added on here, um, but it was positive patron feedback through the website, so that was great.
Great. So Tao, I actually got a couple of responses about the website from, uh, on the, uh, on the Chappaqua Board page.
Oh, okay.
And one was.
Oh, interesting, huh, like.
It was a community member who felt like they wanted to email the board rather than, than you.
Yeah.
And maybe what I could do is send them.
Sure.
You.
Absolutely.
But I could just relate the concern, the, the, the one question was the information regarding the board, regarding minutes, agendas, that kind of thing. Where would we find that?
I think they were concerned about agendas and board packets.
Yeah, yeah.
Cause minutes are clearly there.
And where would we find that? Just, I just, can you show me where that would show up?
Sure, so our events, so today's. So we're talking about agendas.
A, a, anything board related, I just want to know where that would, that would sit under, under board of trustees, I guess.
Oops, sorry, I went to staff. Yep, um, or trustees.
Okay.
So this actually, it's not a web forum, this just goes directly to the emails.
By the way.
So this just goes directly to email, these web form that we have is a contact us that goes to us. So if somebody's emailing you, it's just, they're, they're emailing you.
Right.
This is not a web forum, it is just a, it's just a link to open up mail.
So a, a community member says they want to find the minutes from, say, a meeting a month ago, where would they go?
So meeting schedule, meeting schedule and minutes.
Got it. I, and then I see, okay, perfect. That's all I, that's, that was the only.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
Um, and then it, I think it says archive over here, so prior year's documents are available by request. And we chose to only do the twenty twenty-three as opposed to any more, it's, it's a year's worth already.
Yeah.
Um, but we, we will add another, pretty much, it's like a drop down here. Um, so that you can, so that you can add last year's.
Okay.
Yeah, so going forward, we'll keep everything archived on the website, but, um, we just didn't upload any of the back ones. From the old website.
Um, and the Zoom videos will also get.
So if you go to events and adults.
Maybe, I'm talking about the archived videos, maybe.
Oh, the archived Zoom videos, sure, those are under events, program, uh, sorry, board meeting recordings.
Ah, perfect, so there's even tab there for it.
Mm-hmm.
Got it. Excellent, okay.
What about agenda, sorry.
Sure, no.
What about agendas and board packets?
So agenda's here, so for each.
On the calendar.
Yeah, that's kind of where it was posted. There is no Zoom link for this one, so it was not posted, but there will be, once, if there was one, we would just say, yeah, Zoom link over here.
Gotcha.
And just to be clear, Chantel, who usually takes care of posting the Zoom links and stuff? Is that, you do that, or?
So I'll do it if it's like really late in the game, or if she's on weekend, or Tao's gone for the day, but if it's throwing a damn point.
Okay, great, thank you.
So if we're on time late.
Yeah, no, I just, I, I'm, I'm going to write back to this community member and.
Please feel free.
Just say, let them know what they, what the situation is, so I'm just looking for some information, but thank you for that, that's appreciative.
And these are, you can just click and it's the whole thing, so you can download it if you want, or view it on your own.
Right. Are you at all concerned about security, about? Cybersecurity and. I know Westchester County Library has spent a lot of time sending emails out with cybersecurity.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Am I concerned about it?
Specific to the website, you mean?
Yeah, just the extent to which our website or any of our external electronic portals. Can, should, might be hacked, I don't know, I, I, to be honest, that's the only question I'm going to ask it.
Um, I don't think I have information, enough information to, to answer that. Um, but as far as the website is concerned, we are hosting with Library Market, and they host a lot of other libraries. So I feel confident that we have a, a, a company or an organization that is very experienced with this. And that makes me feel a little bit, you know, more relieved than if we were to go and do this kind of all on our own, where we get hosting from somewhere else. Or, or anything. Um, if the website is down, what we do have with Library Market is an annual service fee and so support.
Got it.
So we have support like year round, which is really nice, like I can update the website, but if there's, you know, an issue or a problem, there's somebody to go to.
And we have pretty tight controls on who's posting, who's not posting for the site.
Yes, yeah, we have several, um, web administrators. Um, and then everybody else has, um, some sort of like staff viewer or some content based on their role.
Perfect, excellent.
Does each department, um, upload their own stuff? Events or?
It depends, in our library.
Or programs.
Um. It's a little bit different, only because it's a new website, so it's, it's, we'll see. Um, but for the events, the children's room uploads their own. And that's kind of how it has been in the past as well. And then there was someone in adult services who was uploading the adults and teen programs, and I'm taking that over.
Okay.
Um, yeah.
Do we have an ability to monitor traffic on the site, meaning how many times it gets hit?
Yeah, so we, yeah, so we had Google Analytics, but no one on staff had access to it before, it was all through. Um, and C C, and C, and no one just asked, no one asked about it, so, but we could have. So during this project, um, they requested that data from us.
They being?
Uh, Library Market, Library Project Manager, um, requested the data for us, from us, and, you know, we were able to see what people clicked on. And that includes staff too, so.
Yeah, it's inaccurate data.
Yeah, it's not as accurate, you know, like we're always going to be going, clicking here to find things, update things, so, like, I'm sure fifty percent of that is me. Um.
Yeah.
But now that we do have access to it, it will be something that we look at ongoing. And we might make changes, like if we go to research and we want to change featured resources or online resources, we can change those things, and then pretty easily.
So, a, a question I have would be how granular can we get where people click?
Pretty, yeah, pretty granular.
Usually.
Yeah, you can, you can get pretty much to like if they go to services and go, you know, go to this curbside pickup versus going down here for this curbside pickup. Like every link is pretty, you know, it's a mess.
So not now, but like in the future, I would love to be able to see.
Sure.
Our library children's room programming and how much traffic that draws. If you know what's going on, right?
From the website, or you mean?
Yeah, I mean, I think that there's an interesting question as to the extent to which our children's programming is drawing interest from people outside the community. And the extent to which we can monitor.
I, yeah, I think you can like see people's like, um, general information, like if it's new or.
No, I'm not interested in knowing who they are, I'm just interested in knowing, do we get in a given week or two? A disproportionate number of hits to the children's room programming site where the rest of the library is getting.
Oh, yeah.
Say three hundred hits, and the children's room programming is getting five thousand hits.
Yes.
And then you go, oh.
Yeah.
That's interesting. The children's room programming at Chappaqua Library seems to be getting six or seven times the hits of, right? That's just a.
Yeah.
An interesting question.
Mm-hmm, I think that, that is interesting, cause, so we used a different platform before, it was called Talkify. And that was a plugin on our old website, so we didn't actually get that information, we weren't able to get that information from the old website. On this website, because our calendar is also a part of Library Market and under the, this domain. Then we are more likely to be able to see which events are getting, you know, clicked on. But that wasn't possible before, because our calendar before wasn't our, part of our domain.
It's an interesting question I have, given some of the noise that we hear about children's programming.
Yeah.
In the Chappaqua Library.
I mean, just by observation alone, it's very busy.
Right, yeah, just by number of events, yeah.
Um, so a couple of the other ones is just, um, that you can register for programs right on the site. Um, so these on the events, this is a little python, it's not clickable, but if it requires registration, you can go and click on it. And register. Um, this we added, and you know, staff made a comment that they did kind of like this, because we stopped doing our printed newsletter. We kind of had this gauge of where people are hearing about the program, so it's kind of nice.
Yeah.
It, it's not required, so we may get information from it, it might be selective, um, and maybe not.
Carolyn, for your information, we are interested, I think we as the board are interested to hear, you know, whether the community support for new printed newsletter. Is there, as we hope, um, because it's in line with our sustainability objectives, et cetera, so, um, definitely.
Right.
Track feedback in that regard.
Yeah, so the, those are the big things from the patron end, um, registering for a program incorporates a couple of platforms that we don't have to use anymore. Um, booking a study room is another platform that it's already included in Library Market, or it's, you're getting it from like LibCal or something else. Um, and our, and our book rivers as well. On the staff end, this also helps with room reservation, we were using a Google Calendar to book the room, so that there were no conflicts. But you can do it all here in this calendaring system. And we.
Are there any restrictions built in, um, such as someone trying to take a room on a, you know, Tuesday for fifty-two weeks of the year at nine AM or something like that, you know?
On per patrons?
Yeah, do we have any?
Um, so for patrons, they can only reserve the four study rooms, that's the only thing that they'll see that they can reserve online with their library card. Um, otherwise we would do that in-house, and we do have a study room policy, which, um, I think made some modifications to. It may be the policy could, uh, policy committee could take a look.
Right, right.
Um.
I did both.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
And, um. It says that they can only reserve once a day for up to four, fourteen days, a few weeks.
Okay.
So they couldn't, but we do have a regular patron that, that books like a week out.
Right.
Is this becoming an issue, this study room and stuff?
I mean, we've only had it live for two days, so, um, we do have it, a lot of it is like walk-ins. So, but you can see.
We haven't gone through high school finals yet.
Those open up the theater for them, so, this is the debut, and this is from today, we had a few, this is, you know, by the end of the day, it's much more crowded. But this was, yeah, this was yesterday, and it was pretty busy, so this is a pretty normal day for us, we get about.
Look at that.
I'm going to say sixteen to twenty a, a day.
That's interesting.
A day, yeah, across.
So like an hour and a.
Yeah. Yeah.
For, yeah.
Reservations per day. Yeah, oh, yeah, yeah.
Is that staff side, or is that?
This is staff.
That's staff side, yeah, okay.
This is what we would do to, um, make a reservation or see what room is available.
So if somebody goes to register for one of the study rooms, um, and it's not available from two to three, does it show that it will be available from three to four on the public side, or?
On the public side, yes, they see the same thing, they just don't see this information, they only see what they can, um, what they can reserve. So it looks like this.
Question.
So these were also new photographs that we just had taken, and they really give a better idea of where you're going, and we're also making new signage for the rooms. So yeah, if you click on.
In line with our colors and branding and stuff.
Mm-hmm, cool.
So that shows, oh, I see, so it's, okay, yeah.
So it looks like some. So it looks like someone reserved in advance for ten to eleven on Saturday already for this room. And then, yeah, it does kind of cut off right before we close. And if so, if you don't see it, I know, some. Someone was a little nervous about next week. You're like, why don't we have anything open, it's not working, I was like, we're closed.
I think I suggest, I, this is just an out of the box suggestion. That we give the names to the study rooms that have like Chappaqua.
No, I like that.
One, two, three. Right?
You know.
What it will.
Well, Chappaqua specific names, I mean, like there could be the Greeley Room. And there could be the Gray Williams Room, you know, such a wonderful guy, Gray Williams, right, and we just.
Gene Craighead.
Right, you take Steve Hauser, we take some, we take some like. Greeley people. Who are perhaps deceased. Right, and give them. I don't know, this by the way, we could get the whole thing, but who gets a name, he doesn't get a name, I mean, I can see the politics around this. But anyhow, I just said, study room three seems a little bureaucratic. It'd be nice if it were the Greeley Room. I don't know, the Chantel Pena Room. Anyhow, perhaps for another, another time and place, but just a thought.
You could, you know, you could do like all this, the names of the schools.
You could do the West Orchard Room and. Bell Room and the Roaring Brook Room and the. Yeah, anyhow, float that by people in the.
Love to do is one for um the people who donated the property, the Grunfels.
I'm a big proponent that names rather than numbers resonate. And give people a sense of place rather than study room one, study room two. And I'm not necessarily interested in giving it to people who've given money, cause I think that's not necessarily appropriate, but people who've had enormous civic. Importance. Anyhow.
Study Room Two is named for someone.
I did see that.
A deceased.
Which I think is great.
That's been there for a long time.
No relation, girl.
No, it's no relation, different spelling.
So it's already, we've already sort of crossed that bridge to some extent in terms of naming rooms, so why not just name?
Sorry, we digress.
Um, we were a part of this, Scope was also an editorial style guide. And so we had to go out a survey and also kind of really consider standardizing names across the library. Um, for consistency, so that kind of pushed us all to really call things by one name. So this room is the program room, I mean, there's opportunities to change it, but um all of that can be edited in the style guide as well.
So what's the side room to the children's area?
The KBR, the kids program room, yeah.
Um, if you don't know this number, that's fine, how much is the fee costing us for the hosting, do you know what that?
I think it's like two thousand for a year.
Sounds about right.
For hosting and support.
It was part of their proposal.
Two thousand for the year. Seems pretty reasonable, you know, that seems.
I think it seems low.
Well, don't worry about it, we paid a lot for the overall project. Do you remember Chantel thirty-six, something like that, like thirty-six K?
Whoa.
Yeah, it was a big deal. Allignment for us.
To get all of what 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 we're seeing now.
Okay, so that. Then they should not charge so much.
And now we have a two thousand dollar a year maintenance fee with support.
I'll take up the actual costs.
I think there's some things that. When I was just in North Salem, there were things like SSI certificates and. And there were some things that you had to pay for the society member, we had a different company that did the webpage. But um, the two thousand was not all support, you know. Anyway. Is that the name of it, I can't remember, never mind, okay.
How I neglected to ask, can you reserve the theater through the website?
Not yet, but we will, yeah, I mean, staff.
When Chantel gets it into shape.
Yeah, I think we were just, I think she had some policy updates as well that, you know, we were just.
That'll be exciting as well.
So yeah, so I think we already have the capability on the back end to reserve the theater. Um, I think it's just getting it online and it's, that would be a request, but notary is available.
Now, can you just show them the library of things?
So we had a few of these items already, now they're just, you know, cohesively in one place and a collection. And so the ones that you can check out, um, take you to a catalog. And then the ones that you can't check out, but that are here and available, just give you more details about them. So we have our hotspots and the newest one is our ukuleles for the ukulele program that we have. And you can.
I read about some libraries where you could check out like a snow blower.
Kisses hands and everything. Yeah, so having it here, you know, definitely opens it up to suggestions and recommendations.
That'll be interesting.
That that's under borrowing?
That's under borrowing, under collections.
Which is under about?
It's under borrowing, which is under collections. Yeah, when the menu is open, like it doesn't give you necessarily a. When the menu is open here, it kind of goes across.
The little arrow indicator will move over.
Yeah, it doesn't, yeah.
Oh, I see. Right, right, now I'm with you, yeah. Okay, when you were talking about the rivers before, will we have a, if if that's the word you use. Will we have a river for teens and children or?
Um, let's go to their pages. So we were trying to figure out like what icon would be for kids and then kind of came up with. Yeah, they're kind of themed octopus and not something like, you know, a little little person or, you know, this just was a little bit more. Like have a lot more character.
I got feedback on that, by the way, Tao.
I think it was more on teens though, right?
Yeah, I was actually gonna go and look at it right now.
Sorry, Tao.
No, that's okay, I think, um, at one point, you know, also the children's room, they were hoping for. Um, a theme and a design concept for their room. And some of the themes that they were centering around was also underwater. So that will kind of manifest, well, we're hoping.
That makes sense.
So these are their customizable um book rivers, and so to answer your question, the. The children's librarians have been adding these themselves, um, I added for adults.
I love it.
And then on the teen sections.
Oh, we've got staff photos, that's so nice.
We have um similar, similar layout, um, events. And also uh book list.
Do we have staff photos around this? Just kind of whoever was.
But we are missing.
I know, I just. So I don't look like a moron.
Absolutely. I'm all over it. I have the photographer coming tomorrow. And the makeup person.
So we did get some early feedback. Um, from patron and they use our contact us form, which is great, um, they don't have to have an email or anything, but the comment is on the back and it's really lovely and sweet.
Surprise.
There you go.
It came in at like twelve. Very, very early.
I will forward you this, these comments that I heard.
I'm surprised you posted on social.
So they're from Briar Cliff Manor, that's surprising too.
I think, um, there is a section, I mean, you would be more familiar with this too, there is a section that is Newcastle. Isn't there right now?
Yeah, Newcastle's map is weird.
So I think there are some addresses. So they they could very well be a Chappaqua patron.
I gotta tell you, I think the website is so friendly and clean, easy to navigate. Very welcoming.
Sense, as you said, that we did the branding first, so it's.
It gave us something to work with and tie ourselves around, um, they also created like a brand story for us with different. Um, like org points of. Our tone pretty much, and that's also included in the editorial style guide, um, but that also kind of guided us on. What the wording should be for some of these things as well.
And when to the um dropdown for to get a library card, does it show our pretty new cards?
Um, this, no, it should though. So in borrowing.
Got a library card, yeah.
It has our um form to get a library card online.
May I ask you, be- because I didn't do it today, um, to. Click on the museum passes as well. I wonder if we say. Much about each museum.
Yes, we do now.
That's great.
Oh, yeah, so we have our trends here, it shows you the policy here. Show you where the policies are as well, and then, um.
Yes, thank you.
We added, I edited this so that it very clearly it says admits. Um, it gives you all that information without clicking through each one, and when you click on reserve now, it just brings you to our. This is a different platform that we use, we're museum reservations.
Then you get the calendar, right, yeah.
Yeah, but it it takes, yeah, it does take you out of our website into another website, which is. Um, and policies, so that is also under about and policies here.
Do we have, and if we don't, that's okay. A place on the website for um hiring for employment.
Good point.
Me too, we have jobs at the library.
Jobs at the library.
And that was on our old website as well. I'm gonna add a little content over here just about. Types of things.
And we could have director listed. That we would wanna have.
Because we we want to, you know, be kind of more aggressive and soliciting candidates for trustees.
Three.
That's.
That's for the search for the library director.
Permanent position.
That that's, so it's already there then?
I was thinking trustee. It would be good to add that. I mean, that's not a job. Or if it is, it's really poor paying, right?
Um, there is become a board member.
Look at you.
And so, yeah, so for um onboard A.
That's great.
The handbook and the bylaws are already in there too.
The employee handbook goes in under, no.
I apologize, can you jump back to policies? And you said they're all separate pages, I just wanted to see like how branded they look. If at all, cause they were highly variable in our current setup.
Okay, they were, um.
In our prior setup.
Is there anyone specifically? I see what you're saying, like the template for them, there was one newer one.
Um, what's a new one, Pam? Patron conduct, that's relatively new. Oh, that's new, yeah, trustee training, that was new.
Okay, so yeah, this one. I did this up for not, but. Where at the bottom, it might say adopted and related policies, these aren't linked anymore. But I think this was, I mean, January, March, May, three, and December twenty twenty-one was probably. Last time this was formatted this way. This is just all from the old website, but if you want to have standardized format for them, just.
Right, just let me know. Yeah, I think that's one of Pam's goals.
Can you go back to the main page one second, I don't wanna drag this on too long, but. Um, I'm just seeing some differences on my iPad. Compared to when you uh. When you go down to the message from the board about the new interim library director. Right, and it says a- at the bottom there. It says whenever. Whichever, and then it doesn't say more or something like that. He said something that could be.
I can ask them, and I wish that they did have a view more or a dot, dot, dot. But yeah, and it's. Yeah, but.
Oh, I see, cause they don't actually tell you that that's going on to another paragraph, yeah. Well, thank you so much.
And you'll let Carolyn know of the feedback you receive, right?
I just sent you something right now. To your.
It looks great on my phone.
Yeah, I really like it for mobile as well, we can design it for. Um, you know, having everything sort of also single stream as opposed to. Or any old webpage that has like two columns to it, it just looks a little dated. It's about fifty percent of um website visits are in mobile.
Makes sense. That's great.
How long are you gonna leave the rocket there?
Um, I think right now it's like scheduled for a month. Yeah, okay. Um, it does go to our announcement of the website. And it does, you know, ask for feedback, so.
Wonderful, thank you very, very much. Excellent.
We're very happy with.
I think it's such a good job.
Okay, um, all right, can I turn to you?
Sixteen hours as a library. Everybody's been lovely, thank you for the breakfast yesterday, that's wow, what a treat, that was just lovely. And surf department gave me a big bouquet of flowers. My husband brought me an orchid, so. So, um, so no, it's been, and I've been, um. Working with Chantel, who is a master and everything. Yeah, and so. And basically organized it, everybody's been helping, so I'm basically going around and finding out. What people do, what can I do, because I think that the library runs remarkably well.
Yes. No, you're good, thank you.
I think it runs really well, I think even one of the staff. I think it runs really well, I think even one of the staff. I was, um, I'm impressed by, um, the the books that you have, I mean, the the book selections that you have, because when I was at North Salem, it was such a small staff, and most we had was thirteen, and there was not another adult for most of the time, there was not another adult person, so referent or thought collection person decided for me, so I I'm I'm impressed with the events that are offered, with the the depth, the collection, with the services that are offered, and this website is, I think, is is great, and I and I really appreciate it because I did the one here, um, two years ago with Lyle Anderson, whom I found town to do it, and then um, did the one in North Salem, and then they're doing another one now, so um, I, so I don't have a lot of knowledge of this, but I do have a sense of how much work it takes and what is looks all the issues that go into it, so, so, yeah, I I'm just very impressed, and um, I'm not sure quite what I can do, but I'm I'm trying. I went to the department heads meeting yesterday and to try and get input, and the staff meeting this morning, and ask people if they have any concerns, to please go back to me, and I'm happy to I think that people have said that they they like having of like, I don't know what role to um, somebody as a director, right, and that I think that they one of the comments was that you see the director as a sort of a conduit between the board.
Sure.
That the board was not necessarily getting um, all the concerns, and maybe the board was not um, as well wanted to communicate, you know, so that it was a two ways to.
Yeah.
So that um.
Yeah, that was definitely a problem.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, um, I asked.
Staff on some policies and, you know, very various things that should have been readily communicated.
Right, so I asked yesterday at the department heads what concerns people had, and and I said, I'll just, you know, report back, so there were two. Neither of them are, you know, earth shaking, but um, I think they are concerned with the way people function, do their jobs, and one of them is one of the policies, the um, de-selection of library materials, and that that was raised because I libraries, as everybody knows, weed constantly, you almost is one book in, one book out, and you're not supposed to have more than was it eighty-five percent of your shelf full, because you have no room to do anything else in, and so what to do with these books is a big issue, and um, if you but if you do a lot of weeding, you end up with boxes and boxes, and I don't know where you store them for the, where you would store them for the friends, I don't know.
Right, we can't.
You can't throw, so that for the whole year, you know, like in the, say, month and a half before
the friends say.
Right.
Then we.
Then you start to spend, yeah.
But we, you know, there's no.
That was the way it was in North Salem as well, and so books that get weeded. So there's some of them that go out for free, some of them are so disgusting, the dishes get thrown away or recycled, um, but what do you do about the rest of them? And so there's different companies that um, are using, I think you probably know all of this, like maybe repeating something you know already, but um, Better World Books is one of them, which is a company that you have to scan in the ISBN, they take it or they don't take it, and they give you if they sell it, they give you some money, and they supposedly are one of these sort of socially conscious companies that will give something to literacy programs, but they are a company, you know, they're a business and corporation. And then Better Baker Taylor is the other one, which North Salem was using, and we use Better World Books, and that's the one that I think you've been trying to work with.
Well, the, yes, the library has been working with Baker Taylor, and then when we were discussing the collection and diesel, deselection. Um, we came to the part in the policy that says, um, you know, um, as far as deselection, we follow.
It follow, I, yeah, it follow local, yeah.
And local laws. And but.
Yeah, I have it right here, yeah.
Oh, I see.
Robin presented on this issue a couple of months ago.
Right, yeah.
And there was some ambiguity about whether or not the library was or was not perfectly in accordance with state mandates laws and.
So I I, yeah, I I read this through too, and um, I think that the first line where it's, is of this third paragraph, where it says, in accordance with local law permits discarding, I think that's the issue of how you physically discard something, I mean, I I think that that's local law, but um, I think it's state law.
Oh, you don't just throw it in the woods, or.
Yeah, right. It's right. Okay. Um, you just, you dispose of it in a responsible measure, so the the next one is, um, so I looked this afternoon and online to see if I could find something that dealt with whether libraries could sell things, because if you, as Robin explained to you, well, I'm sure and it means that if you go through Baker Taylor, you get a percentage off of what you buy.
They give some credit.
Yeah, you get credit or you get some cash, right, so it's a question this library could do that or not, and my husband's an attorney, so I swam out, I said, look at this, okay, and um, I mean, he's retired, he was private attorney, so um, but um, so then we looked online and we found something that says I I I think you I think you can, I mean, that's my sense, I don't think you can go start selling um, you know, puzzles and, you know, all the stuff that a museum would sell, okay, but I think that but he wasn't prepared to sign up on this.
Nor do we wanna put him in that position.
And I, he wasn't the.
But we do have counsel that we work with all the time on a variety of issues, so if you guys can sort of frame what we do, and then what we question, we can send it to them, and.
Yeah, because I think that, you know, this is something that goes on all the time, so this is something that is needs to be addressed a little bit sooner.
People are uncomfortable.
Maybe, so, yeah, I'm I'm happy, I mean, I you know, I mean, just a real cursory look, I found one site that says can library sells items for revenue, you know, which is not strictly selling, but it's getting revenue, you know.
And this is becoming a pressing issue, cuz essentially we have to weed the collection soon. Or we gotta.
We constantly.
Constantly.
Constantly, eh, but we're 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 caught with a problem, which is that every time we're weeding, we've got all these books, and we can't call them, and we can't, we we're ever that that's why this is a pressing issue right now, yes.
Especially it's more so, what do they do with the books act when they're, what with the meeting, right, so we're following a law, what law?
What law we follow, right?
Because, because the you, the policy committee was going through the collection, deselection.
Right, selection policy.
Selection, deselection policy.
Right.
So, and then when Robin was looking at it, then she saw the part that says, you know, in accordance with
State law.
And local law, and then she said, well, she, so this is what we wanna know, is there a law that says
Right.
if we give our discarded books to a company, and they give us some kind of credit?
Money back.
Is that allowed?
It's not like.
So, so that's what she wants addressed.
Got it.
Eh, and so that way, when we, when the policy is finalized,
Right.
either it doesn't have that language in, because it's too ambiguous, like she feels like if that's gonna be in there, it should be uh.
Cite the law.
Uh, oh, right, cite the law.
Right.
That it's that we're abiding by. Or if there isn't one, then it should not say that, you know.
I totally agree.
Yeah.
This is a perfect example of one of the breakdowns we had, where um, our prior director was on the committee for for bylaws and policies, and um, so the presumption, especially when it's a policy like this, that is all about the, you know, technology and expertise of of being a librarian, which we lack, um, we presumed was being vetted at department head meetings, you know, before we worked together to finalize it, and I don't know afterward it hadn't been, so.
Well, I I think that um, I think the policies are good policies, I mean, I I don't think there's, you know, major problems with it, but policies need to be gone over sort of constantly, and and I think that they, I think the staff also feels that, um, but I've been here like day and a half, all right? I don't wanna report for, you know, the, I know, you know, absolutely what's going on, because I don't, but I I do think that um, staff is always concerned that policies reflect reality.
Of course.
And so that rather than a policy be written and said, okay, this is it, it it ought to be, have the relevant staff that are involved in
It should.
in implementing it, involved in doing it, you know, and so I think that was one of the concerns, and then this one seemed to be of some urgency, because it came up, so that's why I sort of started to to take a look into it, I'm happy, I, dear Chantel, whom I adore already after two days, is is so competent that um, I'm I'm happy to take something and 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 work with it a bit, okay, if you want me to.
Great.
But um, I'm not sure my husband's gonna sign off on this, but anyways, no, he won't.
No.
So that was one of the concerns that came up, and then um, the other concern, I think people thought were were sort of just batting around ideas about um, when the work of the theater, which I guess you're closing off for the month of February, for yeah, basically, for the work of the AV equipment to get done, and that whether there needs to be some big community event celebrating it, and the feeling was generally no. Okay, and because it was felt.
I expected the opposite, but okay.
No, the the feeling was that it is something that's going to take place behind the scenes, it's gonna make it a more user-friendly experience to use the theater and the technology involved in it, but they're gonna walk in and it's gonna look sick, okay, so what are you cutting a ribbon, oh, well, okay, what do you do? I did up, so. Yeah. So the feeling was that maybe instead of going to all the work and to do it, and I have to say, because when I was interim director, I came in when Mark has Carl blesses, Mark left in the middle of the project doing the whole thing, so I ended up completing it, and I was there at the ribbon cutting, okay, and it was one big, okay, and so uh, you know, I had people, you guys had great ideas with maybe a movie and popcorn and, you know, something like that, but not a big party, because.
Right.
Feeling was what they do, you know?
Right, right, it's not like a barn raising.
Right, we're not gonna trump everyone up the steps and, yeah.
Yeah, so that were um, my repeating everything that you have.
Yeah, those were, yeah, those are the things that you just got.
Bring up one issue, um.
I'm sorry, I have slightly hard of hearing.
I'm, well, me too, so I'm going to be aologist tomorrow.
And yell at each other.
There had been a lot of discussion around what the one hour delayed opening was gonna be used for on Thursday. Today was our first day, right, and I understand that it was used productively, and I'm happy about that. Um, thoughts about how to communicate to the board or the general public about how we're using that time? I got a message from a community member who was speaking about, you know, we're losing an hour's worth of service time. For what reason? How do we know this is being used effectively, et cetera, et cetera? I'm not interested in micromanaging anybody here, but I was just wondering had you had thoughts, if you don't, perhaps we can talk about it another time, um, around uh, being transparent or open about what that one hour delay opening on Thursdays is gonna be used for.
Well, I mean, at the department heads, and these guys are wonderful, and they had a whole sheet, okay, developed instantly a whole schedule, okay, so that there's going to be, um, once, we'll go, we go a bunch of it, Denise, yeah.
Right, yeah, we're we're good.
We're good through the summer.
Through the summer.
And uh, communicating with like the police department and CPR, like, so just places to get training, but we do have a schedule.
So a thought might be.
We add that to the calendar?
Right, a thought might be that at your next meeting, a next board meeting, you just simply run down what the hours, either our will or will was or will be used for, just so that it's.
Do you mean prospectively, or?
Well.
I think it should be part of the director's report for the prior month, and so in November, um, you know, we use this time for blah, 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 blah.
Yeah. Absolutely.
You know, just make it routine.
Yes. Yes.
I um, I defer to you because you do it up, but it was immediately clear to you, you said, there's just not that many Thursdays, you know, and there was a staff meeting once a month, right?
Right, so that, so when Bob was first talking about this, right? It was gonna be that the first Thursday of the month is an all staff meeting, which is a really great idea.
Yes, I agree.
Pull everybody together, I mean, how many things minds have gone over today, right?
It was pretty good.
This is the whole, there's always a list of things. So that's the first Thursday. The second one will be some kind of training.
Yeah.
So the one that's coming up next is we're gonna have Bill Link
Right.
show us around the facility, so like, if if we have to all of a sudden turn off the water or something.
Yeah.
I don't even know where the boiler is, I don't know, honestly, I don't wear any of this stuff, so this would be a good thing.
Absolutely.
Um, and Chantel has been involved in the security, the new security system with us.
Beautiful.
So that's next Thursday. Um, then the third Thursday is gonna, is going to be for department meetings.
Okay.
So that each department can sit down together, like for for reference, we have a meeting once a month, adult reference, but we have to have the children's room cover the desk.
Right.
So that we can actually meet.
Right, right.
So like have a cert, cert can have a meeting, so now
Right.
every month, it's a part, each department can sit and talk to each other at the same time.
Right.
Which is just never otherwise possible.
Right, yes.
So, that's, that's what's gonna be the third, so first and third are meetings, and second and fourth are trainings, so. So, uh, so we already have planned the, so we have the second one with um, Bill Link and Chantel, and then the fourth it will is actually Thanksgiving.
Thanksgiving falls in.
So then it's gonna be the fifth, and it's going to be having um, a representative from neighbors link come to talk to us about um, equity, diversity, and inclusion. They have a, a program that they go out and and offer.
Good organization.
Yeah, so she's.
I mean, I can take over two of the trainings, so it's gonna be a two parter.
So she's she'll be here on November thirtieth, and then on December fourteenth for 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 that
That's Thursday.
I love that.
Um, may I, may I say something? Can I say something? Um, I thank you, Denise, for the update on on what's happening. But I I I think that the board okayed this, that this is gonna happen, and it's as a, I just don't, and and I think when a person or even two people, let's say, um, if the majority of the community has no issue with this, you know, I I and this and the staff and the and the interim director and the and the, you know, the new director is handling this, like that's, that's how it goes, like, I don't think that the that we need to make a very big deal about this, like, like, we decided that this was decided, this is in place, and and that's it, like, like, we're talking about adults.
Excellent point, we don't need to be defensive.
Yes, we don't need to be defensive, we don't need to micromanage, we don't need to answer to anybody, and that's it, and you know what, quite frankly, if the staff wants to get, if one of their Thursdays, they wanna get together and have breakfast, like, I don't care, you know, I I just don't care, but
I I agree with you, but I also think it it should be part of a routine reporting by the.
Sure, of of course, and I and I completely agree with you.
Defensive.
I just don't think like we have to say like, are all the Thursdays covered, or no, like, the director makes a report at the board meetings, and and that's it.
And that's why, I agree, Pam, and that's why I think that retrospective, not prospective, is the way to do this.
I mean, that's right.
I don't, I don't, perspective to retrospectively, this is what we did, but 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 that's fine.
Right, yeah, policy will always change.
Right.
Um, just for your information, we did a, we had a community survey, and we included a question to this effect, and and achieved, you know, significant support, so, before authorizing.
I'm not sure I would, but, you know, I I defer to you, because I'm not sure I would put a schedule on out for the public either, just because, you know, I mean, this is, it may change, you know.
Yeah, of course.
I I, yeah. And and if they look at it, say, oh, why do they need to learn, you know, so forth like that, it's just that this is for you know, in a world of changing technology, where libraries are evolving to serve the public, and you know, on a daily basis is necessary to train the staff, and this is what Thursday mornings would be devoted to.
Right. Could we put something in the calendar, though, that is um, staff training, you know, like something that general?
Professional development.
Yeah.
Rational development.
Uh, all staff meeting, I think, is fine.
PG.
If if that's what the schedule, you know.
Really general.
I I I do prefer, I do prefer probably, um, if it means anything, probably like staff. I don't know, I don't know, you guys decide. Again, I have no say, you guys decide.
Yeah, I mean, that's what C S D says.
Meeting, training.
Right, but professional staff.
I think we have to put it on a calendar.
If we have to, yeah, or if we have to explain, that's that's.
Yeah, and I think that the reason this has just become an issue is that we did reduce an hour of service time, and so there's legitimate question of, well. So the community's losing an hour, what what what's, right, and that's fine, and we don't have to be defensive about it, we just have to explain. This is what we're doing. I would have to do it prospectively, but we can do it retrospectively and we can make it broad and somewhat general.
You know, o- other libraries.
Of course.
Yeah, we also survey other libraries.
They open. After, like the staff comes in at nine and then the library opens at ten, or like Bronxville. They open at nine, the staff comes in at nine and the building opens at twelve. They can actually work. And then it's open from twelve to eight or something, you know, so. So so we're asking for, you know, one hour of the whole week.
Hour of the highest operating hours.
Because, yeah, so many aren't even open on Sunday or sometimes they're open or or half days Saturdays, so we're open.
A lot.
Yeah.
Okay.
So I don't think.
Um, okay, George, we're gonna lead us off, we wanted to just do sort of a very quick review of any. Major issues for the committees.
Okay, uh, last meeting, I mentioned we were looking at. Uh, investing our capital fund or Fortmore Capital Fund. And Brian did some investigation in terms of Valley Bank is paying us four point seven five percent. Which was higher than I was able to see, uh, meeting with Chase, they they were saying it's gonna be about four point five, it's linked to the Fed. Um, so uh, I see no reason to move out of Valley Bank. Other than if we were worried about our funds being secured, but. According to the email that I saw, the amount of money that we have in there is fully F D I C covered. So I don't know if there's any reason to move them that money at all, and you want, don't want it all in one bank.
How would it all be?
Well, I'll have to have to defer to Brian, I just have a brief um summary that came. For the uh. Said um that this woman who contacted us from uh Valley Bank Deborah Christina. Uh, Brian, and she uh. Attached some information discussing the stability of Valley Bank and the sales sheet for the uh. Complete F D I C insurance coverage. So again, I'd be speaking with a a lack of complete information, but it seemed that.
We should check on that, though, because to my knowledge, it's two hundred fifty K.
Right, but it the the insurance may not be strictly F D I C, it's insured in some other way through the Fed. But not the F, not necessarily Federal Deposit Insurance Corporation. But um, I'll I'll speak to Brian about this and get back to you. Brian asked that uh. I make the following movement. To move. Okay, I moved it to board approve the interim library director or finance officer to engage P K F O'Connor Davies L L P. Is our external order order since twenty eighteen for the year ended June thirty twenty twenty three for the amount of thirteen thousand dollars. A five hundred dollar four percent increase from twenty twenty two due to our increased cost of labor. And related benefits which have been rising more rapidly in recent years, plus the below hourly cost for any services outside the contract. Contract is being reviewed by Library Council B S K.
Okay, I'll second the motion. Um, in terms of discussion, um, I wanted to include a few notes there, though, since two thousand eighteen is just a note to ourselves. That it will have been five years um at this point, so um. Time permitting, it, we love P K F O D, but um I I believe C C S D may use them as well. Um, so a lot of, you know, positive feedback. But I would say twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five, we should probably undergo. An R F P and um just just make sure pricing's in line with. What it should be. Um, the other note was um on B S K that we do need to send that. Contrary, I I think it'll be a five minute review because I didn't see much that changed from the prior year, but.
Well, this contract says in Brian's motion is being reviewed by B S K.
That's just that we will do that. By which I ask you.
That's Tom Sawyer. Babe the fence.
Okay, any other comments on that? Okay, all in favor? Pam's eye, okay, so we're unanimous for the four of us. Okay, anything else for finance? That was a lot, thank you. Um, and then see your war wound, by the way.
Just uh. Breaking leaves.
Yeah, sorry. Um, let's see, building and grounds, um, just a few quick notes um. We have set a date to meet with K G N D prior to our meeting with. The um Chapel glass school district uh facilities committee. Uh, so we'll be meeting on November seventh, we've also reached out to Dan Birmingham um. And who is a individual recommended by C C S D. Apparently, his core business is focused on counseling around bond offerings, so. Um, I think that will be good education for the board, we'll work to get a retainer letter. Um, that we can review and approve and then have him um speak at a future. Board meeting or um in a legally legal advisory um setting. Your big thoughts, John?
Well, yeah, you know, I just wanted to say that I'm still. And I articulated this at the last meeting, I'm still a little anxious about. The fact that it's November second and the prospect of going to the community in May with a bond. Seems soon. And I just don't want us to get ahead of ourselves on this.
But what I want is for us to get very ahead of ourselves because you're right, we're probably planning for twenty twenty five. But let's.
Yeah, okay.
Start, you know, the wheels move so slow.
No, I I I I hear you on that, I hear you on that.
And part of it, to your point, is education, so.
Education, getting our library director staffing. Settled. You know, rather than going out and saying to the community, I need you to. Put an extra X number of dollars onto your tax levy. Yeah, okay.
Um, let's see, we held our update meeting, Chantel was key to this. Um, with stratagem security where we did walkthrough of the system. Um, after they had pretty much finalized all matters, um, we're working on. Um, the addition of access control, which is the key card um. For one additional door for which they are asking for asbestos testing. Oh, one, two additional doors, one's being tested, good point.
They think there's asbestos in the door?
No, there was unfortunately a conversation, someone mentioned, oh, the asbestos store, just thinking, I guess, either from the material or the age of the door or whatever, and from that moment, the.
We have to do asbestos testing. Is there asbestos?
No, uh, so I checked with Pam Thornton, our prior director and um or a prior director and. She said the only asbestos was um with respect to uh the cooling tower on the roof and that had been abated, et cetera. She she agreed with me per my research and it appeared to be a product that is. Uh, I forget, they call it like wood wool, um, basically it looks like.
Is that gonna co- increase the cost of stratagem? They're gonna up our.
It would only depend on if it came back positive, but yes, because then at that point you would have to abate it, right, so. Fingers crossed.
Well, we know.
When the testing is approved and then the testing is conducted.
Bill Link obtained a proposal which I did not present um for approval today because it was a broad testing of the entire theater. And I want to just test what's being required by our vendor, which is the door, um, so. He should, he should be getting a revised bid and or not bid proposal.
This could blow the cost way up.
Oh, if we found it, yes, absolutely, but if we found anything, we'd wanna know because we would wanna. Yes, you're right, um, but I am truly confident that that is not that. So.
We we did receive the stratagem proposals for that. All the items that we discussed at that meeting.
Have you counted, you, when you were here and you, because you oversaw this whole blowout of the front end of the building? Was there asbestos issues back then? Do you recall?
I don't remember, I don't, I don't. I don't remember any asbestos, no, and I don't remember. A lot of discussion about it, but I didn't. Isn't it just the, is it the door itself make? Or is it the, I I thought it was the friction with the frame?
No, it's that weird, it's soundproofing, it's a soundproofing material. And it's actually along the whole wall. And the door is. You know, utilizes the same, so. Before the, it it's a reasonable concern before they drill into it, um, especially when it was put into their head or or stated. But we'll just get the testing, we've got the vendor identified, um, Bill's worked with them before, so. Hopefully doesn't disrupt things. Um, okay, um, anything else on the theater?
That's a sliding from January, right?
John's tracking it.
I am just.
You're welcome to.
I'm not giving you a hard time, Shentou.
Not sorry, they're not started until they have the equipment, so yes.
And you were making a big deal about that, because you, yeah, yeah, because you want them sitting in there for weeks on end saying, well, yeah. I I think that's a great idea, yeah.
So they um have days open for February, they're looking to set up their workshop, I think, February sixth. Seven and the eighth, they would be on the site pulling wires, running wires, whatever, that has officially locked down and then.
Okay. Okay, great.
Um, George, jumping back to the access control um locks uh. Which, by the way, if um. Next Thursday, when when there's that walkthrough, if you're available, either of you, you may find it of. Interest and actually we should extend the same to Brian Cook, because Pam and I know the building pretty well at this point. But there will be addition, you know, in the future, there will be different members on the um building grounds committee, so it's good for everyone to know. Anyway, so one of the points I made here is I am a big fan of these access control. Um, locks that that we've employed on a very minimal basis. And they bring a lot of advantages, one, we, you know, it's little things like making sure the public's not walking into the reference area. Um, because they don't, you know, they're confused about where they're going. Um, there there's a security element to it, there's a uh um just efficiency to it of. You have the um. Uh, card around your neck, you know, on a lanyard and you just pop it open um and. Anyone can pop it open versus having to find me or, you know, Denise or whomever with a key, right? And there are security benefits too, in that we could tell if something's ajar, that sort of thing. Anyway, so it's a great system, it's not inexpensive, um, and so.
You might be asking what the cost was?
I would have to get a per door, we could, we could ask and we should because you're starting the budgeting process already.
That money's already out the door, right?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Um, but we can get a prospective cost at additional doors um for twenty twenty. For our twenty twenty four to twenty twenty five budget, um, so that we can build in a few more doors. You know, I I think it would be ideal to have all of our locked doors on that list. In the future, but that will take years.
Yeah, you know, Karen, I would love to be able. I I don't disagree with you, Jen, that this is from a security standpoint, a valuable thing, and we live in a world now where you gotta do sorts of things. But it'd be great to sort of get some staff input, just to sort of make sure that they are brought in on this conversation. And if you could just sort of ask people sort of where they are in terms of. How these doors are gonna, you know, I I I don't have a good sense as to where people are in terms of their security and safety anxieties and concerns. And um, and I would, I wouldn't wanna for a moment speculate on where people are, but I think it's important for the board at least. To um hear from the staff about how they feel about workplace safety when it comes to securing doors, yeah.
I can tell you that, you know, you've seen um that we've had some team incidents. And Kathy Paulson, you know, felt very strongly that, you know, the access to her office, for example, um, and that's now. You know, through one of the control.
But she she. Down the entrances otherwise? Or this is this just a walkthrough? And from the team zone as well?
But not from the main library, yeah.
Yeah, but there's.
Yeah, her office actually has a million entrances. Our library has a million entrances, by the way, I if if a security expert came here, they'd say, why? You know, why did the architect develop this with so many exterior building envelope doors?
Horace Bailey High School has this.
Yes, exactly.
This is a perennial problem with Horace Bailey, yeah.
Trying to see if there's anything new here, no, I think we're. No, I think we're fine. Personnel, John?
Uh, personnel, um, Pam, did you have anything? I don't. Uh, you do the payroll review, it's uh, right?
Next week.
Oh, it's next week, I have the wrong date, sorry.
Oh, oh, okay, oh, that's right, Jen, we don't have to do it.
We're all.
We're off.
So you got hit with that day one.
Is this something I need to do tomorrow? No, no, it's done.
Not actually the following week, yeah, every two weeks.
You're not going anywhere, right?
She might be going to Alaska, you never know. Uh, I wanna thank George publicly for organizing this thing, this was his brainchild, the little reception and that was. I wanna thank for that, that was really great, um. And welcome, Carolyn, again, um, and I thought Todd did a nice job. Um, I I do think, and Pam and I have to meet to to, and I think that now that I've had Todd's presentation here. She and I need to get together and talk about sort of issues around stipends and compensation for Todd's work, so I think that's an important thing and. I will reach out to Pam and within the next uh few weeks, we will um get something nailed down, is that okay, Pam? Yeah?
Absolutely, as um I know we're jumping, but the same has to go for policy. Uh, John and I will connect.
Yeah, yeah.
With Carolyn and will will.
That's great.
Talk about revising some policies for the website and uh things like that.
Right.
Just to interrupt, um, that you raise a great point, and when we set our policy meetings. Um, I don't think it needs to be with the new website, I think we can avoid putting it under all the board. Information, but I, let's put it on the calendar. Great calendar, so it's there, okay?
Um, the one thing that I do think is time sensitive, and maybe we can get on it sooner rather than later, is the holiday calendar for um. Two thousand twenty four, I know, Jen, you and I. Two thousand twenty four. I know, Jen, you and I, you had reached out to council about um.
Yeah.
Having them look at that. I know that uh. As part of the employee handbook and that.
So I need dates from the two of you. To circle back with BSK.
Yeah, oh, right, we talked about that, yes, and I think next week I can, that will work.
Okay, eleven seven?
Eleven seven, yeah, I just need to confirm that. I'll I'll do that tonight.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Can I ask one question about calendar and it was this issue for November eleventh? We're closed for two days, it looks like. There, we're closed for Friday and for Saturday.
Because. Um, the way I understand it is that when. Um, a holiday falls on a Saturday. Then the Friday.
It's observed.
It's is the observance of the holiday. So that's when you close the.
Even though Saturday is a normal operating day for the library.
Right, I know, I'm surprised by the two days, but that's, I think that's what the thinking is, is, do you know? What's going on in in North Salem that goes on the Friday and Saturday?
It's it's like it, if the eleventh is on Tuesday, then it poses, you know. But I think that that's sort of.
Mood yourself, Pam.
I think, I think that's the way.
No.
Yeah, I think that's general in a way, yeah.
I don't wanna.
And so we're closed for both?
We're closed for both Friday, November tenth and Saturday, November eleventh.
Yeah.
So we're closed for two, we're closed for two consecutive days. And um, the federal holiday, I understand, always sort of bounces, but. It seems to me as though the holiday would be that we were closed for the Saturday, the eleventh, but that the tenth we'd be open. Obviously, these X are already cracked and we're not gonna go back and change this policy, but I do think that. In the universe of sort of public perception, the idea that the library will be closed for Saturday, for Friday, the tenth. And for Saturday, the eleventh, I I just, I I imagine we may hear something and. You know, um, yeah.
Yeah, well, I I think, I might give up, but I think that um also. Uh, it is a holiday that employees expect, and so you have a different group of people who work on Saturdays than the. Staff who are here helping twenty three Friday. It's a possibility. In North Salem, we had a certain, there were certain mandated things like the eleventh had to be closed and the. Yeah, New Year's Day and, you know, things like that, Christmas Day and Thanksgiving, except for, and then, but there was a maximum number of holidays. And the director got to sort it out. As to whether.
It's not in our employee handbook. It just says Veterans Day.
Yeah, but but some, I think it's following a federal guideline where like federally it is observed to Friday. I think the reserve might even be closed on Sunday.
Right, so probably the banks are gonna be closed on Friday in observance of the holiday.
Uh, it's a bank holiday.
So it's, you know, it's like that kind of a holiday, right? Everything's gonna be closed on the Friday because of the holiday, but. Then. Do you open on the eleventh, which is actually.
Right.
The holiday. I guess this is what must have gone.
Right, and I I wonder what the schools are doing. I I I don't know what would.
Well, the the schools probably. Yeah, and then Saturday.
Saturdays on school day, right?
Right.
Right, of course, okay, so that that that's another problem. All right, you know what? It's just one of these things that happens.
Yeah. It's kind of like if it's the Fourth of July, right, then you you always get a holiday for the Fourth of July, right? When you get the Friday or the Monday, if it falls on the weekend.
Right.
So then I guess, what would we do? Would we?
This coming January, we're gonna have, January first falls on a Monday.
Yeah.
And so January second is now gonna become the holiday, so you're gonna have. The first closed, the second closed, so the opening will be Wednesday, the third. Um, similar idea that, you know, we're gonna be closed Sunday, although we close over the holiday weekends, don't we? The first is what day of the week? The first is a Monday. So why wouldn't be closed the second? Because the second is a federal holiday. Because the second is the. I'll double check that. Maybe maybe I'm wrong. If it if it was on a Sunday, yes, but not if it's a Monday.
Would be Sunday and then New Year's Day would be Monday, so then we come right back to Monday.
Yeah, right, yeah, so Christmas is a Monday.
Not New Year's.
So then.
The first is a Monday, so we're open on Tuesday, the second then, okay, all right, then I. I don't know what I'm talking about.
So we'll be closed on the two Mondays.
That's one change we could make in the handbook is, you know, I broke it into federal and other.
Yeah.
So that there's clarity, we could say observed federal, you know, so that it clicks with the observed date. When it falls on a weird.
And draw a distinction between that and a bank holiday.
Yeah. Yeah.
Right. Okay. Does this happen when the Fourth of July is on a Saturday? Oh.
I think so, because, yeah, because like people in in any other nine to five job get the Friday off. If the fourth is on a. Suns on Saturday, you always get a day off. For the.
Okay.
Yeah.
In the emails that I sent you too, there was a comment about this, just so.
Yeah, noted.
It hasn't gone unobserved by community best. All right.
I've put up all the signs today. I've put up all the signs today saying that we're gonna be closed.
Friday and Saturday.
Saturday, and it's on the web.
Um, yes, it is.
The calendar, yeah, yeah. And then I'll put it on social media as well.
Thank you.
You do the social media?
Yes.
And the last piece was that we finalized some compensation issues with the former director, and I think that's taken care of. Right, we said I'll check Chantel, I think, yeah, so we're good, yeah.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you for doing that.
Um, and then Pam and John, any? Updates from a search perspective?
I'm not on the search committee.
Oh, forgive me, George and Pam. I I tend to merge personnel. Incorrectly. Sorry.
Well, I was the search committee for a hot sec.
Right.
Thought better of it. Well, the search committee, Matt, Pam, do you want it?
No, George, you got it, you got it.
The search committee met last uh week and I'm sorry, the beginning of the week, and we interviewed our first candidate. And um. That's as far as we're prepared to go, right, to say anymore at this point.
Okay. Thank you. Progress.
Yes.
It's it's. It's progress, which is good, okay? Great, um, one question, you you, I think I remember you all are working on the. Search vehicle that you're going to be using for outside of our. WLS.
Yes, uh, indeed.
Indeed, or whatever, yeah.
Right.
Why LA? We have a post on A L A because there is a. Steep fee for that. It is on Westchester Libraries website and the Chapel Goss website.
What's this? Just for my education, what's a steep fee? Like, what's A L A?
Six hundred?
That is a lot, yeah.
And nylon is on nylon?
Nilo seventy five.
Is what?
Seventy five dollars, yes, it's on nylon, yes.
Yeah, can I ask you a professional question? Do you think it's worth spending six hundred bucks to get advertised on A L A?
Six hundred dollars?
Yeah, do you think that's worth? To put it out.
I get, it wasn't that we weren't gonna pay for it, it was more so, let's see if we can get, we're more closer to home and then.
See what we can get locally.
See what we can get locally, because we want to get somebody that's either from closer to Westchester or in Westchester. Before we start going to. Outside.
Isn't it, I mean, there were directors. Who came from Rockland County and um. I wonder if there's a, if there's a way to have listed on that. On their um, like Westchester Library system.
We did.
You did, on Rockland County.
On Rockland County?
Near by counties.
Wouldn't. Would it? Would Nyla um.
Yeah, uh, probably, I I seem to get something every day from my line about some. Job opening someplace in New York State, but um. But I know that, for example, the director of the Austining Library and I think Jennifer from Summers. Um, maybe came from.
Yeah, okay, interesting. Okay. Next steps, we are targeting November sixth for our board packet for the next regular board meeting. Um.
Which is this coming?
It comes so fast.
It's coming Monday.
Comes so fast. Right.
It's just coming Monday.
So. Carolyn, you've probably been informed, but Chantel set up a folder system, so the department head submit. Reports so that feeds into your report at the meeting, so.
We've talked about it, but I'll have to give you some work.
Okay. Um.
But the next meeting is not till the thirteenth.
Correct. Correct. Um, so any other issues? No, no, okay. Uh, I'll move that the board join the meeting, oops, return the meeting. Right, a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, Pam, thanks for joining.